All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a regular member, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for November 23rd. We'll begin as we always do with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll begin with public audience tonight, and there's always two ways to participate in this virtual world we're in. You can join our Zoom meeting, or you can write us a letter. To join the Zoom meeting, we ask that you reach out to Tom Fitzgerald ahead of time, T Fitzgerald at Simsberry dash C T dot gov. That information is also in our meeting minutes. And it looks like, oh, there you are, Shannon. I was looking for your box. Shannon Knowles with us. Good evening.
Hi, everyone. Well, I did both. I'm here live and I submitted something so, but I'm representing the Aging and Disability Commission tonight. And we felt it was an important opportunity to speak to you all in person, if you will. So on behalf of the Simsbury Aging and Disability Commission, we are submitting this letter to encourage and support the formation of an affordable housing task force. Our suggestion is that this task force be created to operate on a timeline and perhaps under the guidance of a consultant, and should be comprised of various community stakeholders, including but not limited to senior citizens, people with disabilities, both physical and intellectual disabilities, or parents of such, caregivers, agencies, a nonprofit developer, realtors, planning and land use commissions, economic development, et cetera. And from the standpoint of the commission, our priorities are as follows: access to employment opportunity, transportation, access to healthcare, access to community interactions, housing that is afforded through minimum or subminimum wage. And while Simsbury has affordable housing options, none of them meet all of these standards. And while we theoretically support these options, they are isolating, and it is no small wonder that there is a perception of limited demand for already existing housing. While we currently allow accessory dwelling units, which is a step, they do not capture the inclusive needs of the disability community. ADUs also do not foster long-term independence as the model encourages reliance on aging parents. And we assert that Simsbury needs help in moving forward, as we currently have great work being done separately on our boards and commissions. We need to take a deep dive into a long-term plan that will be sustainable for all of our residents now and in the future. And further, we have great opportunity to be a leader in Connecticut and nationally, but we will not meet our affordable housing goals overnight and without guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Sure.
Do we have anyone else who's with us live? I don't see anybody. What I'm going to do next is read from the letters that we received. And again, if you want to submit a letter, you can send it to our town clerk, Erica Butler, E Butler, at Simsberry dash C T dot gov.
Sean, did we lose him?
I think we did.
The Simsbury Inclusive Neighborhood Development Coalition, SINDCO. Other members include those from local groups such as First Church Simsbury, Spirit, Holding the Door Open, and Simsbury Diversity and Inclusion Working Group. There are 12 of us in the group so far. We're working on a proposal for affordable and inclusive housing to present to the town of Simsbury. We cannot do this alone. We're requesting that an affordable housing committee be formed with the town's government, one whose main tasks are, one, to bring to fruition the state mandated 10% affordable housing guidelines in a creative, enthusiastic, and timely manner; and two, to liaise between the town's Board of Selectmen, Planning Commission, Zoning Commission, and the interests of stakeholders and residents to keep this local groundswell of interest in affordable housing and its momentum moving so that we can assist the Planning Commission attain and surpass its 2020 to 2025 affordable housing plan. The next email we received is from Rick Collins. Someone corresponded with me that her life's work has been to give people tools to lift themselves out of poverty. Unless towns like Simsbury offer affordable housing, many people will continue to be relegated to a very segregated Connecticut. Perhaps there is state land the town can purchase that can then be used to develop multi-generational, diverse, inclusive, and multi-socioeconomic housing that could draw people from all cultures and backgrounds into our fair town. We can be a shining light on a hill for all who wish to live in our wonderful town and a true leader in breaking the grip of poverty, exclusion, and segregation in Connecticut. Sincerely, Rick Collins. I've asked Sean to read the next letter.
All right, I'll read the next one. And to be clear, I don't have any exhibits to share, even though the letter does share them. I'm not refusing to do so. I just do not have them. Board of Selectmen Meeting, November 23rd, 2020. At the last Board of Selectmen Meeting, November 9th, 2020, I submitted my comments to the board to be read aloud and show pictures within the context of my remarks to be transmitted during the public audience section of the agenda. However, First Selectmen Eric Wellman did not show the pictures of the dilapidated town-owned barns on Barn Door Hill Triangle. Show picture. And the paddle court door change to the inside of the paddle court at Simsbury Farms. Show picture. This is not the first time First Selectmen Eric Wellman omitted my pictures. Public audiences on the agenda to allow the public to express their opinions in a public forum, whether Eric Wellman agrees with them or not. First Selectmen Eric Wellman is paid $10,000 by the taxpayer to promote a public policy agenda, not to censor speech when he doesn't agree with the narrative. According to First Selectmen Eric Wellman, free speech is only allowed through the lens of Eric Wellman. Alternative opinions are edited through the admissions that challenge First Selectmen Eric Wellman's narrative and that of Town Manager Maria Capriola. Dilapidated town barns on town-owned property on Barn North Hills triangle do not reflect good stewardship of the property. A chain door on the inside of Simsbury Farms paddle courts is hazardous. A player who was hurt due to the obstruction on the court has not returned to play, placing liability on the town. This activity by First Selectmen Eric Wellman should be censured by the Board of Selectmen leading up to the resignation of First Selectmen Eric Wellman. An agenda item on November 9th, 2020 Board of Selectmen Meeting was a discussion of the proposed affordable housing plan submitted by Mike Glidden, the town planner. This was a comprehensive study on the affordable housing plan for Simsbury. Over the years, Simsbury has had several attempts at affordable housing. The original model for Eno Farms was homeownership, but over the years, it morphed into the model we have now. The Amos Eno property was deeded to the town to care for the poor of Simsbury. Both Virginia Conley and Owen Murphy Homes on land deeded to the town through the Eno Trust are restricted for elderly residents with low income guidelines. This development has flourished over the years in the direction of the Simsbury Housing Authority. However, other attempts to provide low and very low housing has failed. A prime example is Eno Farms Affordable Housing presently under the ownership of CHFA and managed by Conover. There are 50 rental units in the complex as part of the land under the Eno Trust. A letter dated April 29th, 1999, from the Charities Division of the Attorney General states, "On November 25th, 1882, Amos R. Eno conveyed 140 acres of land to the town of Simsbury, quote, 'to be used for the occupation, maintenance, and support of the town poor of Simsbury, and for no other purposes whatsoever,' end quote." In 1989, Ralph Elliott, the legal counsel for the town of Simsbury, contacted the Attorney General, inquiring whether it be permissible to use a portion of the Eno Farms property developed housing for the poor. On April 6th, 1989, Assistant Attorney General David R. Ormstead, who is head of the Public Charities Unit, sent a letter to the attorney Elliott specifying that the town could comply with the language of the Eno gift if it developed housing for persons, quote, "at or below the poverty line," end quote. The report that stated that the town of Simsbury holds Eno Farms as a trustee or fiduciary impressed with the obligation to hold and manage the land to provide for the poor in a manner consistent with the donor's intent. If there are problems with the way the housing on the trust property is organized to run, it is the town's fiduciary responsibility to take whatever steps are necessary to correct them, ensure that the land and the now housing developed there are used to serve the poor. Eno Farms Affordable Housing allegedly is a fraudulent operation inconsistent with the Eno Trust. CHFA, the owner of the property, does not have clear title to the property and cannot sell it. According to the advertisement for Eno Farms Affordable Housing, the income restrictions are at $77,280 and rentals start at $1,064 a month. This appears to be higher than the very low, than the low, very low restrictions. How can the town plan for more affordable housing when they have been shown to be irresponsible and its fiduciary responsibilities? The town has fulfilled some of my FOI requests that I will be discussing. There are many more requests that still, that have still to be filled. Many are months in arrears. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter, Joan Co., and Facebook.
Okay, thank you, Sean. And the final email comes from Nancy Yanopoulos. My name is Nancy Yanopoulos, a resident of Simsbury, member of First Church of Christ, Board of Mission and Outreach, member of Simsbury Inclusive Neighborhood Development Coalition, and GHIAA, Greater Hartford Interfaith Action Alliance. Recognizing that Connecticut is a state with more separate and unequal housing than nearly everywhere else in the country, I strongly support efforts to establish more diversity in housing in Simsbury. Due to the complexity of the issues surrounding affordable housing, I believe a task force should be set up to expedite the following. One, research the various affordable housing options, including apartments, single-family homes, mixed-use, and multifamily dwellings, to determine what type of housing is most needed in our town. Two, determine best practices and survey other communities similar to Simsbury who have had success in adding affordable housing. Consider legal issues including zoning and land use regulations. Determine the best sites in town for adding affordable housing, including new houses or apartment developments or using existing housing. Investigate options for creative financing for these projects. Seek input and collaboration with Simsbury residents and community groups, including houses of worship and other local and statewide groups dedicated to inclusion and diversity. Five, present a positive and cohesive plan to the residents of Simsbury focusing on why affordable housing is not just a state mandated requirement, but also an asset of our town. Thank you. We also received an email from Shannon Knoll and Diana Yaisley, which Shannon read. So I'm not going to reread it, but I'll ask that it be distributed to the Board of Selectmen so we all have that. I believe that concludes public audience tonight. We will next go into the First Selectmen's Report since we don't have any presentations tonight. For my report, I'm going to do something a little bit different. It's just a letter to the community, and it goes as follows. Dear friends and neighbors, Thanksgiving week has arrived. Our community and our country face extraordinary challenges. In recent days, I've been feeling a range of emotions from sad to angry to hopeful. Sad is more than a quarter of a million Americans have died from this horrendous disease. And angry because the wealthiest country in the history of the world was unable to stop it. But I'm also hopeful. We know how to keep our economy going, how to keep the doors on Main Street open. We know what it takes to safely educate our children in school, and we know this because we've done it. What our educators, staff, administrators, and Board of Education have pulled off is nothing short of extraordinary, and it worked better than my wildest expectations. Schools are proving to not be a source of secondary spread of the virus. We know it works, and we know how to do this. But this only works if we take personal responsibility. Avoid socializing with people outside of our immediate family or pod, especially indoors and especially without a mask. That's where this virus is spreading by and large, not in businesses that are following the rules and not in schools. My family is not going to be taking our annual trip to New York this year to see our relatives, and it breaks my heart, but it's the right thing to do. Instead, we've ordered our Thanksgiving meal from one of our great local businesses, and we're going to enjoy it, just the three of us. On a side note, if you need help putting that Thanksgiving meal on the table, I beg you to call Simsbury Social Services. I know that it's not easy asking for help, but please do make that phone call. Getting this right requires sacrifice and personal responsibility. If you care about keeping the economy open and our children in school, let's be smart about this. If you love your country, let's make this our patriotic responsibility. If you love your fellow humans, let's be sure that we get this right. Stay home Thursday. Avoid indoor gatherings with anyone outside of your family or pod, and wear a mask. Our country is depending on all of us to do the right thing. What does give me hope is that we've shown that we can coexist with this disease. We can safely open our schools and much of the economy if we follow health and safety guidelines. There are also some incredibly promising vaccines on the horizon that will hopefully bring us back together again soon. I can't wait for that day. So that's my letter to the community, and I wanted to turn it over to Maria for the Town Manager's Report.
Hey, thank you, Eric, for those comments this evening, and hello, everyone. I'm going to lead off this evening with my coronavirus update. And as Eric indicated, our COVID case numbers continue to rise in town. We're continuing to monitor the state's municipal alert system, and we're currently at orange status, indicating that we have between 10 to 14 cases per 100,000 people. For the two-week period that just ended November 14th, we have 11.7 cases per 100,000 residents. And what we're seeing is that the case numbers, again, as they're increasing, we went from 33 cases over the previous two-week period to 41 cases over the most recent two-week period. So we've been continuing to see this steady incline. We are faring a bit better than most other towns in the state at the moment. We are one of 24 towns at this point that are not currently in the red alert status. The rest of the state, all of the towns are at that point in which they have reached red alert status. What's different this time around, unlike the spring, is that our community spread of the virus is really happening again in the community setting as opposed to in the spring where folks living in our congregate setting were hardest hit by, by the virus. In our area, small gatherings and household contact are actually the leading sources of spreading the virus. I really want to remind folks that gathering sizes have been limited to no more than 10 people at private residences, 25 people indoors, and 50 people at outdoor events at commercial venues. And we have information about that provided through the manager's report. Adult members of households are contracting the virus, mostly from travel, work, again, or social gatherings, and then spreading it to members within the household. And I do want to reemphasize what Eric shared, and that at this same time, we have no evidence that there's been secondary transmission of the virus in our schools. So again, a major job well done to our staff and officials at the Board of Education, as well as the support that the Health District has provided to us to make sure that we can keep our children safe and in school. At this time, our Health District is urging our most vulnerable populations to please stay home and stay safe and recommend scaling back to Phase 1 activities. I'd really like to encourage folks to watch the first 30 minutes of our last Public Safety Committee meeting from Thursday. Jennifer Cortanas, our Executive Director of the Health District, shared very important information about the virus and the current status within our community. And again, I know it's 30 minutes, but if you could take a look at the link, I highly encourage. I think you'll find it very informative. Like many businesses and organizations, we are here at the town experiencing some effects of COVID on our workforce. We're fortunate in that our workforce has largely remained healthy during this eight-month period. However, since November 1st in particular, we have seen a dramatic uptick in the amount of staff members who have been quarantined because they have come into contact with people who have tested positive for the virus. So just since about November 3rd, we have had 18 staff members that we have had to quarantine due to contact tracing. And this is both for contact that they've come into folks at work or either perhaps in a personal setting. So as a result of this, again, like many places, we are experiencing temporary staffing shortages at times, and our response times for non-emergency matters may be delayed. We are asking our residents and patrons for kindness and understanding and patience during this difficult time. I know during our Public Safety Committee meeting, Sarah Nielsen spoke to this a bit, and we have started to see. I think as people have grown weary and fatigued from the pandemic, whereas perhaps earlier in the pandemic, you know, maybe a little bit more understanding and patience and folks have just grown tired and are a bit more angry and short. But again, please understand, we are doing our best. But again, like many of you, our staff is experiencing being quarantined, and then again, we are having some temporary staffing shortages. I do want to acknowledge and thank my staff for continuing to engage in safe practices while they remain at work. We are doing our absolute best to ensure that our critical infrastructure and services are remaining fully operational during this time. And to the best of my knowledge, no member of our public has been contact traced due to coming to a town facility for municipal services. We're continuing to regularly update our website due to the travel advisory. We're also sending information out through social media about that. And also want to let folks know that at this point in time, we are continuing to closely monitor whether or not Town Hall and the library will remain open to walk-in visitors for both limited hours and limited uses. At this point in time, we are doing our best to hold steady with those hours, and we do not yet have plans to close either facility for those limited walk-in hours. At this point, the transfer station, ice rink, playgrounds, basketball courts, tennis courts, and a number of our other park facilities are open. If you are utilizing these facilities, please observe the rules and public health guidelines regarding face coverings, gathering sizes, and social distancing. Upon further review, we are going to continue to keep Eno Memorial Hall closed for walk-ins until further notice. We recently received guidance from the Health District to cease all in-person activities at our senior centers to help reduce community spread again for folks who are part of our most vulnerable populations. So effective 11/18, we unfortunately had to temporarily cease again our foot care, hearing clinics, blood pressure, blood sugar screenings. We've had to cancel those again until further notice. We are continuing to provide a weekly hot lunch for our seniors. That is a pickup-only option. Daily Zoom opportunities, our bimonthly newsletter. We've also had to dial, excuse me, scale back our dial ride services a bit for the time being for that particular group of folks. The Department of Community and Social Services does continue to respond to the growing needs of our community during the pandemic. And in particular, the food program continues to grow. So at our most recent distribution, we served 143 families. We gave out 42 bags of kid-friendly food. We provided 109 boxes of food that was provided just by the Salvation Army, and we delivered to 30 homebound individuals and families. This is phenomenal, just the level of support we've seen from the community. This program relies on donations, and we're really thankful to have First Church, who has recently come on board to help us with our winter distribution for the food program. We also have information in the manager's report, how you, if you would like to help donate, how you may do so, either through, again, nonperishable food, toiletries, et cetera. Encourage people to check out the report for details on how you can help. Jumping ahead to Board of Selectmen Business, I recently received an affordable housing survey request from the Council of Small Towns. They are looking for feedback to help inform them as they advocate on this issue on behalf of their members. I did earlier in the day forward an email to you with the survey. If this board is interested in providing response to that survey, I'm happy to help facilitate that. There's a couple of ways we could do that. We could certainly have a discussion later in tonight's meeting if you wanted to do, to add that to the agenda as a two-thirds vote. Or simply, if members might like to provide feedback to me by completing the survey, I can certainly, at a staff level, gather that feedback and provide it to costs directly, and then provide you all with a summary of that at a later point. Also, just for a point of clarification for Board of Selectmen Business, tonight during public comment, a member of the public had raised that we are not showing photos through our virtual platform, and did want to let folks know that that was something that we have vetted through legal counsel. And legal counsel did confirm that we do not have an obligation to show photos or other visuals that people may submit to us for public audience. Certainly, if somebody joins us during public audience and they want to speak on behalf of themselves, and if the visual is not offensive, obscene, et cetera, we will let them, let them air that themselves. But again, that if we are reading written comments, we will not be sharing photos or other visuals that people have provided. For Department News and Notes, just a reminder that Public Works is wrapping up its leaf collection on November 27th, and we have information on how folks may participate in that program. Social Services also has quick reminders on our holiday program as well as Medicare open enrollment. And from our Town Clerk's Office, an announcement, Anita Schwager is going to be retiring from the town of Simsbury at the end of this month. She's worked for us for over 30 years in a number of different capacities in several departments. This is an incredible achievement. It's a really, again, wonderful career, several, again, several decades of service. I know all who have worked with her or have interacted with her during her tenure would want to wish her well in her retirement. And then subsequently, Janet Brady has recently been promoted to Assistant Town Clerk 2 following Anita's retirement. She has a great skill set and a wide range of knowledge regarding the Town Clerk's Office, and we want to wish her well in her new position. For special events, a reminder that the 2020 Shop Local campaign is coming up on November 27th and 28th. Folks can, I help keep local dollars here in Simsbury. For every $50 gift card or certificate that's bought at a participating business, you get a bonus $10 gift card. And we have details at shop-simsbury.com. I want to thank the Main Street Partnership and the Chamber of Commerce for joining together to help put that together for our community. And last but not least, Simsbury Celebrates will happen this weekend in a very modified capacity. We're calling it a reverse fire truck parade. It will be on Iron Horse Boulevard. And essentially, what will happen is that the various fire trucks will be decorated and parked along Iron Horse View, excuse me, Iron Horse Boulevard, and then the vehicles will drive by to sort of see the different vehicles. So the reverse, the reverse parade. We are asking folks who would like to participate in that to please enter from Owens Brook Boulevard. That's going to be from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. this coming Saturday. At around 8 o'clock, there will also be fireworks. We are hoping that people will not gather and congregate, but we rather have provided some recommended viewing locations, a few parking lots in town that you could remain in your vehicle and enjoy the fireworks. We have Simsbury High School, Henry James Middle School, or the Simsbury Farms Recreation Complex as locations that you could view the fireworks. We have details and in the schedule at Simsburycelebrates.com. And again, just very, very much want to thank the committee that put this together for being so creative during the pandemic to still provide the community with this really special annual event that we all love so much. So many thanks to them for doing this for us.
Yeah, thank you, Maria, and thank you to all who are keeping these traditions going and giving us some light during this pandemic. I was just looking at the picture today. It was only about a year ago of Santa putting out a fire at the 1820 House. How much times have changed. All right, we're going to jump into selectmen action. Item A is tax refund requests. Is their motion effective November 23rd, 2020, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $12,553.65 and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
I won't.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item B is an item that came from our Sustainability Team and the Clean Energy Task Force. Both of those groups are interested in establishing separate Facebook accounts to promote their work. And under our social media policy, they need the blessing of this board. Both of these committees do awesome work. Clean Energy Task Force right now is promoting a campaign to encourage residents to take advantage of free home energy assessments. And the Sustainability Team, in their first year, shepherded Simsbury to Silver Certification in the Sustainable Connecticut Program. Anything staff would add on these items?
I think you kind of hit the nail on the head with that, Eric. Covered all the bases.
Yeah, I mean, these are two groups that are very active, doing, doing good work. There are questions from the board? Okay, we'll find the motion. Is there a motion effective November 23rd, 2020, to approve the creation of a Simsbury Sustainability Team Facebook account to be used by the committee to publicize their efforts, of which town staff will have oversight? And to approve the creation of a Simsbury Clean Energy Task Force Facebook account to be used by the committee to publicize their efforts, of which town staff will have oversight?
I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you to both of those groups for promoting an active Facebook presence, getting the word out. Item C is our budget status report, so I'll turn it over to Amy Meriwether, Finance Director. Hey, Amy.
Hello. All right, let me share my screen for you so I can, you can see what I see. And I'll just take you through some of the highlights of the financials. So as of September 30th, we're at about almost $52 million in revenues, or 51% of our budget. Going up here, I'll just go through some of the major variances. The Tax Department, 54% of budget. It's typically where we are around this year. So nothing exciting there, but it does show a great variance. I just wanted to, to highlight. to highlight it. And then down here with the Building Department, the Building Permit Line item is actually already at sixty-five percent of budget. So so far, so good. We're having a great year with that. Unfortunately, not such a great year with interest rates. Compared to the same time last year, we're down about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in investment income. And then moving on to the Town Clerk's Office, we actually are still seeing an increase in our recording fees. We're already at fifty percent of budget for the recording fees. And then in addition, this is the department where our COVID grant money is being recorded for the time and support needed for the election process that the Town Clerk's Office and the Registars Office took part in. So those are just the major items under the revenues. Within the expenditures, there was really only one that kind of stuck out to me under the Police Department. And this is a combination of a couple of things. So there was a decrease in some wages and the overtime. And then the major variance is there was actually a large gasoline payment in the last year that wasn't made at the same time this year. So it was just a timing of payment.
Amy, is that also because we just brought the Assistant Chief on or the Deputy Chief on?
No, that would be a, that would be a change in budget. This is a change in actual to actual.
Gotcha, okay.
So for our expenditures overall, we're at about twenty-two million, almost twenty-three million, about twenty-two percent of budget. So for a quarter of the way through the year, we're pretty much on target. Moving on to the Simsbury Farms Fund, majority of the explanations are all COVID-related. So we had our decrease in special programs, day camps, the Simsbury Pool. All of those are a result of the decrease in activity because of COVID, whether it be because programs didn't happen or we had greater restrictions during the year. And then again, offsetting that, since there was a decrease in revenue, there was also a decrease in the corresponding expenditure line items associated with those programs. One item here is the golf course expenditures. There's a significant increase compared to the same time last year. That's just because we purchased a large piece of equipment in the current year that we hadn't purchased last year. So overall, we're seeing a net increase in revenues over expenditures of almost a hundred and forty thousand. You can see the same time last year, we were about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. But obviously, because of the decrease in the programs, we are seeing a little bit of a decrease that, well, a lot of a decrease there. Our overall fund balance is about two hundred thousand dollars. And then on the Health Insurance Fund, we're about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in excess of revenues over expenditures. If you look at the same time last year, we were about one point two million, but if you take out this transfer, we're actually right about the same as we were last year. Last year was about three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So what I like to touch on here is our total reserve. And right now, we're about four point seven million, or thirty-two percent of expected claims. So as you've heard me say in the past, our target for expected claims is twenty to twenty-five percent. We're a little bit higher, and typically, if you're higher for a certain period of time, you can look at kind of moving some money out of the fund and using it in other areas, or reducing premiums, or things of that nature. But because of COVID, a lot of procedures, doctor's appointments, those, those, things of those nature were put off. So we are expecting to see an increase in claims this year, so we're just going to keep an eye on that until the end of the year to see what the, what comes back through claims because of those procedures and things that were put off, how much of it is going to increase. So we'll keep you posted on that. That's all I have for major highlights. If anybody else has anything else in the pocket on the financials that they have questions on, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Are there questions for Amy?
I just have a question, and it might have been in there, but all the estimating that Tom Tversky did on the pools and all those analysis, like, did we lose as much as he thought we were going to lose, or did we come out, like, how did we come out on that?
Honestly, not sure what he, the estimates that he did for, for when.
Well, when they did all the fee, I guess I could just ask him, when he, remember he had all the schedules on the fees that we were going to charge? And how many people would come and how much we were going to lose over the season? I was just curious as how, how close he was to what he projected.
I honestly don't know, but it looks like Maria has a.
Yeah, I'm looking at Maria here.
And that's a great question, Wendy. I'll definitely double-check with Tom as well. My recollection was, you know, he ran a number of different scenarios. And the range he thought was likely forty to fifty thousand dollars probably a loss, maybe on the high end, as high as sixty thousand. And my recollection was the pool loss came in around forty-five, so remarkable. I think the estimates that he did, and especially so early in the season, with not a lot of information available from the state at the time, it's pretty amazing. I think we landed pretty close to where he thought we would.
Okay, I just, I was curious. Thanks.
Great. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Amy. While we have you here, I think it's appropriate to move on to the next agenda item, and perhaps you could walk us through these transfer requests.
Sure. So under the supplemental appropriations, for the first one, it's for some road paving for about six hundred thousand dollars. So Aquarian does some work during the year related to their main work program. And instead of doing the paving work, if we're already going to be doing paving, and Tom can speak more to this in detail, because he knows a lot more about it than I do, we'll do the paving and they'll reimburse us for the work. So there have been instances where that's happened already, so they've sent us the money. But now, since it wasn't part of the original budget, we need permission to spend the money. So we're going to exceed our, for our regular maintenance, we're going to spend what was budgeted. And then because we did the Aquarian work as well, we need this money on top of that to finish our regular maintenance throughout the year. So we're requesting an additional appropriation to be able to spend the money that was received in about that six hundred thousand dollars. On the bike and pedestrian crossing improvements, this was a grant that you all approved back, I believe, a couple of years ago now. Oh, yeah, grant was awarded in September two thousand eighteen. We received the grant, and now we would like to do the work during this fiscal year. So we would like the additional appropriation to be able to spend these funds as well. And then the last additional appropriation we're looking for is COVID-nineteen related. This was a request from the Board of Finance. We have had about seventy-five thousand dollars in COVID-nineteen-related expenditures on the town side. And so although we're not close to our budget in spending that yet, since it's only the first part of the year, the Board of Finance did want to make sure that we got permission to spend over and above our budget in case we need to do so. So you would be approving the town portion of about seventy-five thousand dollars that would theoretically come out of reserves. However, we do have a funding available from the state of Connecticut for about fifty-five thousand dollars that we should receive funding in the next two weeks. We checked on it today. And then we also submitted for some grant funding from FEMA, and we have no idea where that stands. We have put in for that funding probably about five or six months ago now. And we have not gotten an answer back as to what is going to be funded, what's not going to be funded. So as of right now, all we know about on the town side is about fifty-five thousand dollars. And then we also did receive some, some state grant money from the elections and the registrars, which I believe was additional, almost about twenty thousand dollars. So right now, we have, we have additional funding enough to cover our COVID-related expenditures. But again, we have, we have to be able to get permission to spend those funds, so we're looking for the additional appropriation to be able to do so.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Are there questions?
Oh, yes. Chris, go first.
Thanks, Sean. The, to just clarify, the seventy-five, so the Board of Finance has asked for seventy-five. And is that because we've already incurred that? I missed that, okay. So we've got fifty-five coming to us from the, from the state, the feds, which is state. So that's twenty gap delta. So then what is, and then what are we, I don't want to go granular and ask what the, the costs are, but is there a projection forward of what additional cost could be out there?
So pretty much, we've spent all the big dollars already. We've done the Plexiglas, we've done the gallons of hand sanitizer. Yeah, so it's just going to be maintenance from here on. So my guess, and Tom, if you want to interrupt, feel free, I think it's going to be on the P P and E materials. It's going to be on probably like the masks, the chemicals, the cleaning supplies, things of that nature. There's nothing else that's really been coming through on a regular basis. The thermometers, the COVID checks that we've set up, those have all been put in place. There's nothing in addition related to those. Like I said, I think we've spent all of the big dollars.
So if we come up with, if we've already got to cover twenty and we've got to, it's not going to be another seventy-five. If you had to find twenty fifty for it, that's fine, okay. I don't want to be, you know, we're doing, if there's something unexpected that's been talked about in small areas of expertise really hasn't filtered out yet, that would be, you know, that's what I was worried about. Okay.
So help me with this one, Amy. We are, we are appropriating seventy-five thousand dollars. Where? The Board of Finance wants it in what account?
Oh, the appropriation would be whatever account it was paid out of. So if it was paid out of P P and E, the facility supplies.
Yeah, but that's, that's not how appropriations work, and the Board of Finance knows that. When, when we do appropriations, we do it from specific accounts. And at this point, no accounts are over expended, correct? Right, so the Board of Finance needs to tell us what accounts they want this to come from so that we can appropriately, because right now they're asking for a blank check for seventy-five thousand dollars, is what this says to me. And that doesn't seem appropriate, because.
Where would we, where would we put that fifty, the check that comes in from the feds? Say, where would that go into?
That goes into the general fund, and then it would get appropriated back. We'd have to appropriate it back out later on. My, my point is, and I'm not trying to be a pain in the ass here, but if we're going to get down to process, which it sounds like the Board of Finance wants to do all of a sudden, and mind you, we've never done this. Every year, we have fluctuations in accounts. And for instance, the, we approve, the Board of Finance approves, and the taxpayers approve police overtime. And in the last few years, we've over expended the police overtime budget. And we've cleaned those up at year-end transfers. Now, you can argue that in the spirit of appropriations, we should have probably come back, right? Before that line item went over, but it was cleaned up in the entirety of, of budget transfers at the end. And the overall appropriation was not exceeded for the town, right, Amy?
Right.
And we never, because we don't have the authority anywhere to over exceed the overall appropriation for the town, right? Within that, you as the Finance Director have authority to keep accounts current, right? And to, to pay bills and, and work within the confines of the overall appropriation. So stop me here if I'm off in any point, but in my ten years, we've never done this. Now, again, I'm not saying not to do it, but if we're going to play nickel and dime with accounts, then the Board of Finance needs to tell us what account in our budget they want us to initiate an appropriation from. And that, that, that would seem to me to be the appropriate way to do this. So we're going to start, again, nickel and dime in all these accounts. Amy, am I off base here?
No, you're not off base, but doing it the way that you want to do it. So the Board of Finance is looking at, in totality, you have your approved Board of Selectmen budget to spend plus an extra seventy-five thousand dollars. If we're going to do it the way you do it, you know, if Tom Roy spends an extra ten thousand dollars in cleaning supplies at the, for COVID-related items, but then he also saves an extra ten thousand dollars because they were not cleaning bathrooms every two minutes or every, you know what I mean? If we have that additional savings, then the net is zero. We don't need the additional appropriation. So we'd want to wait until year-end to see what that looks like.
Yeah, my, you made my point beautifully is, and again, I'm all for extra money, but if we appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Board of Selectmen can then use it for interdepartmental transfers at year-end without Board of Finance approval, correct? And I'm not sure the Board of Finance's intent was to give us an additional seventy-five thousand dollars to spend, whatever we see fit at the end of the year.
Highly unlikely.
So I'll do with this what you guys want, but it, it doesn't sound like this one was entirely thought through by the Board of Finance, maybe? Or it's, it's premature?
Should we ask for a clarification? For that item?
Again, it's, it's up to you guys what, what we all want to do. I'm just, I've never seen one of these in November. When we clean up the accounts at the end of the year as part of, I mean, Amy does a fantastic job of managing the funds. The report she just gave us showed us that we're, I mean, we're on track, but we're in over fifty-two percent in one account. Does that mean we should go appropriate two percent to that account? Or if it's forty-eight percent, is that, it should be forty-three? No, we don't, we don't do that throughout the year because all we would do is appropriations up and down. You, you let it go. And again, if there's clearly an item, I'll give you an example, the, the three and a half million dollars that Tom Roy remembers too fondly, where we had to go pay a contractor to clean up the town, that clearly is a supplemental appropriation that was not planned for, right? That's way over and above, and there's no way to clear that with, with departmental transfers. But fifty here, twenty-five there. I guess at this point, I'm not understanding the need to do it. And then I was confused by there, they think there's going to be a million one. I didn't understand that either.
So the million is actually on the Board of Education side. There are actually, there are already almost eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the hole with COVID, if you will. However, do you have state funding of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars? Board of Finance let them keep their savings at the end of last year, so they actually have enough to cover their expenditures. But that's for the Board of Education side.
So Amy, should we meet them halfway here? And I, I assume, is this going in Public Works? Or where is, where would this go from a budget standpoint? Because if it's Plexiglas and sanitizer.
There's part of it in Public Works, there's part of it in Social Services, there's part of it in elections. I mean, it's, it's in various budgets, public safety.
Can we just keep it general fund and just, and then write a, write a letter, write a note someplace, line item? I mean, so you were talking about, I mean, are you potentially talking about splitting this up amongst six different areas, accounts?
From the letter of the law, if we're going to follow how appropriations work, my understanding is you have to put it in the departments or the accounts where you're going to then spend from.
Okay, so, so, and you, can you make a recommend, maybe you can make a recommendation of which accounts it could come from? That goes back to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance approves it, sends it back to us, and then we say.
And then we're done. If we do that and approve it, we're done. It's now, Amy, help me out. Can, does this work like a budget where they can line item it? Or do they need this specific appropriation from us here? Because this is off-cycle.
Um, I'm actually not sure about that.
All right. I'm not trying to be a pain, I'm sorry. And I should ask it. All right, let's have some fun. Let's put, Tom, what do you want? You want twenty-five? Let's give Tom twenty-five. Let's give the chief ten. So I'm going to keep a count here. Let's give, oh, Tversky's going to need some money. Let's give him, let's give him fifteen.
You have five left.
We got five left? No, we got more than that, right? No.
You said fifty-five.
Oh, we're doing seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
You got to deal with the fifty-five later. We're going to come back and have this, have this discussion again. So that's fifty, right? So then, well, let's put, what, ten in elections? And we'll give Maria ten in Town Manager Budget for Town Hall.
You're back to five.
Back to five? Oh, so we forgot social ser, sorry. Let's give ten to Social Services and five to, five to Maria's office.
Seventy-five.
There's a seventy-five. Amy, does that work for you?
Perfect.
There you go.
So moved? So Sean, is that, is that a proposed motion?
That was a proposed motion. Is the seventy-five to the Board of Finance has asked us to expand. I think we're appropriately making recommendations, and of, of course, I think they can tweak those if the process holds true. But if, if we're going to do this right, we, nobody gives blank checks with no accounts anywhere. Because I don't know how that would even be an appropriation.
I moved. Mike, you seconded?
Yes.
I think questions or conversation from the board?
I'm not really sure what you just did with that, or why, so we have a hard time voting yes for it.
I mean, from an appropriation standpoint, it's our job to initiate an appropriation.
So is this thing seventy-five thousand dollar appropriated for the town to use for COVID expenditures? However, we see fit, but you're saying you want it specifically aligned to accounts? So then you're limited, you're limited to those accounts rather than use it where it's needed?
If, if you're going to follow appropriation authority, there's no such thing as seventy-five thousand I see fit.
Okay, so, but then.
Doesn't exist in, in anyone's authority, right, Amy? Nobody can spend seventy-five thousand. spend $75,000 if you're following the true letter of appropriation. That it, it needs to be tied to an actual appropriation. Not just a.
Tied to a COVID appropriation, but I guess theoretically, you know, you're right. If you wanted to tie it to a line item, yeah.
I, I have, I have no problem. I have no problem of, of following Sean's requirement. If that's, if that's accurate, that's, I'm not here to.
If it's not, I'm fine, but it's.
The process is, that's, I'm not here to question that, but what I am here to question, this is like, this is going to my administrative rabbit hole here, is that I'd rather follow through with your, your, the spirit of your intention, which is ask, ask them where to properly park it, to draw from it, rather than just making estimates of where to put it with, if it's not accurately spent from there, and then we're doing something to pull that out and have some accounting down the road. If that's, that doesn't seem like there's, we're, we're factually following the spirit of your initial concern, which is to properly account for it from specific accounts. Does that make any sense?
Do you think to just approve it as is and then ask them or say where we want it after?
No, just deny this and ask them for guidance. Where they, where should it go? Where should it go?
I'm with Chris. I think we need to be more detailed.
Yes.
When we present a budget, we present a budget with maintenance X. Those are, those are, right? And that rolls up to the overall appropriation of the municipality, right, Amy?
Well, what if somebody, what if, what if, what if somebody comes to us, Sean, and says, you, you gave 10,000 to the COVID, they gave 10,000 to, to social services? And they don't have, they can't prove they spent it out of that. That's, that's the direction of what you're going in, is you're going, you, you want this to be in an orderly, properly administered process, which I have no problem with that. So why don't we do it completely from, starting from the start, from the front end?
Yes, what I'm arguing is that these works, these expenditures are already incurred and they were incurred out of maintenance line items in, in appropriate, in an appropriated budget, in an approved budget, right? And Amy had and has the authority to authorize these expenditures because they fall within these accounts, right, Amy? So no, nobody has violated their legal authority here. So the Board of Finance is now asking us to appropriate $75,000 for COVID expenditures, which have already been, have already been expended. So Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, you would have to go back and back them out, even though they were duly approved expenditures, and then reallocate them to this new line item.
No, so what would happen is we would have the appropriation at year end if we were to go over. But if we're not going to go over, then we don't need the appropriation. So basically, like you were saying, we're just kind of like a little premature. Because we don't know how much of an overage we need right now.
Basically, Wendy, what I'm saying is we don't send the Board of Finance a budget that says we want $22 million to run the town. We, we tell them what we're going to run the town and what we're going to do. And this to me is a very small version of sending them a $22 million, hey, we're going to run the town.
Okay.
And from my viewpoint, Sean, what we're really doing is when we approved the budget and the town voted on it last, or earlier this year, we didn't know about any of these expenses. We had no idea in November, we'd still be talking about this thing called COVID. Um, we haven't gone over budget yet, which would create a different kind of a problem. But this is a way to keep us from running in the red, and I think the numbers are reasonably accurate. I mean, let's be honest, in town hall, when we were doing the ballots on election day, there was hand sanitizer there. Who knew which bucket it came out of, whether it was the town clerk's office or the town manager's office?
That all came out of town.
Or your office, I'm sorry.
Amy, I mean, again, what do you want us to do? You're, you're, I, I, I trust your guidance from a financial standpoint. I wasn't at the Board of Finance meeting. This doesn't make any sense to me, but if, if, if this isn't appropriate, this is appropriate to do it at this point, and, and you're the financial expert in town. And I, I trust, I trust your recommendation.
Can, before you ask her that very potentially awkward question, can I just share my recommendation and see if Amy would feel that that would be responsible?
No, I mean, hold on, Eric. I don't think it's an awkward question. She's the finance director and, and I think it's appropriate that we follow the finance director's guidance.
So in my personal opinion, I would wait until we get closer to year end to see which line items are going to go over. And if they're going to go over, is it COVID related and then make an appropriation?
Yeah. And again, I, I'm not trying to put you in, in between the two boards, Amy, but we hired you and you are the financial expert of the community and I trust you. You, you're, you have phenomenal experience. You did this for a living as, as an accountant, as a, previously as an auditor. And, and again, I, I value your advice. So that's why I asked for it. I'm not trying to put you in a tough spot.
So I would be comfortable tonight, moving forward with the appropriations for paving and pedestrian crossing.
I agree.
Okay, well, um, well, let me first withdraw the last motion, um, since I technically made that. And.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion effective November 23rd, 2020? To approve the supplemental appropriation requests for road paving, uh, bike and pedestrian crossing improvements expenditures, uh, as presented?
So move.
Second.
Is there any further conversation or clarification? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Amy, when we're getting close in, in March, we'll have this conversation again, right? And at that point, if we look like we're going to go over anywhere, then perhaps it's appropriate at that time to start moving money around. Because we do want to respect appropriation authority. And that's important. And I know that's, 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 that's very important. You and I have talked about that, so. All right.
Okay. Item E is, uh, staff is requesting a transfer of a little over $151,000 from the Police Private Duty Fund to the Capital Reserve Fund. So folks, for folks at home, the Private Duty Fund is comprised of money that the town gets when police, staff, private events, such as things at the Performing Arts Center. That $151,000 represents the ending fund balance in the Private Duty Fund as of the end of June. And this transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund would allow the town to fund some smaller capital projects and reduce the amount that would need to be borrowed in the future. Before I open it up for questions, is there anything that staff wanted to add on this item? Okay, um, questions from the board?
Is, is this kind of just an accounting item to move it to close out the special duty fund? Is it the special duty fund? And move it into the, um, Capital Reserve Fund?
Yep. So this dates back to, um, a project the Board of Finance had me work on. Um, and we come to, came to find out that when the Private Duty Fund was created, the intention was that at the end of the year, the money would be, um, any reserve fund balance would be moved out and put into the general fund.
Yep.
This hadn't been happening just because it kind of got lost over the years. So when we found it, um, this year end, um, we did not recommend it go into the general fund because the general fund has a healthy balance where we need it as our capital. So we, um, asked the Board of Finance as part of year-end transfers if we can move it to CNR as opposed to the general fund, because they did not want to keep it in the Private Duty Fund. So, um, they approved the request to move to CNR, so then it comes to you.
And then being in CNR, it can be used for police needs, right, going forward?
Yeah.
Yep. Or presumably not, but I mean, they're always going to have capital needs that'll exceed that amount, so.
Right. Okay.
Thanks.
Amy, just to be clear, this is a potential extra step for you, though, to monitor, because now this, these funds are commingled in CNR?
Right. So I think, um, the Board of Finance and their intention is that this just becomes part of CNR and becomes part of money that everybody uses. Um, but we probably would track where it came from on the Police Private Duty Fund, um, you know, to see how much is coming from the Private Duty Fund over the year. So, yes.
Um, Maria, I apologize. This is, this is, this is sincere. I just thought of this. The MOU, MOU we just signed? Would this be considered a material mid-year financial impact that would need to at least go to the Police Commission before we did anything?
It's a good question, Sean.
No, I, I don't think so, since we discussed sort of ordinary accounting transfers, um, as not necessarily being material. I think this would probably fall within that category. Um, we did, however, uh, when this was discussed at the Board of Finance meeting last week, we did give the Police Commission a heads up about it. As well as the fact that it would be on your agenda for tonight. Um, so we did, um, make them aware of it and answer some questions that a member did have on it. Um, but formally bringing it to them, unless you felt strongly, I think this might fall under sort of those like ordinary accounting transfers.
Okay. Because we're not taking any appropriations away or, or not defunding anything at this point. Okay. But there is going to be extra work where we're, when we do want to fund things like armor, cruiser outfitting, et cetera, we're going to have to remember where this money is, right? As we do budgets, et cetera. Because it's going to build up each time and we gotta, we're going to have to keep moving it. This is just more process, right?
Right. So at the end of each year, we would move it. So if the intention is to use it for police use, then yes, we would have to keep track of it. I know that's something that Maria would want me to keep track of. Um, but the Board of Finance is insinuating that they do not want it used for just police use. They want it used for town wide use. So from their perspective, it's just the additional transfer at the end of the year with no additional tracking.
So what we've got here is a policy decision, guys. It's not about the money. The money gets used when we budget. This is about whether we as a board agree that the Private Duty Fund should be used for reasons other than the Police Department. And in our history, we've only used the money earned in the Private Duty Fund for the Police Department. Um, so again, the dollars are going to get spent. I mean, it's, 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 it's a, it's a Rob Peter, Pay Paul back and forth. It's, it's, but it's a policy decision that the police officers go out and earn this, this Private Duty Fund. And, and the philosophical question is there's somewhere in tear on vehicles, et cetera. And we can debate that till we're blue in the face, but this is a shift in policy of how we've, how we've handled um, this, this fund and, and these types of expenditures.
Yeah. So Sean, philosophically, I feel that the money that, that goes into this fund should be supporting the needs of the Police Department. But as I said earlier, they're, they're always going to have capital needs that exceed this amount. So to me, it feels like.
Sean, I think, Sean, you yourself made, you know, a, a, a very strong voice, had a very strong statement around um, when, when, when that group comes to us, we, we never fail to to meet their needs and expectations. I don't think that is something that we're changing, but I mean, did, I think we, I mean, we did have this circular conversation when we first talked about this three meetings ago, I think, when it, when it came up. And so I thought it was, and you know, you guys correct me, I thought it was, yes, the money is still going to be earned from, from certain activities. Parked at a certain, in a new account, yet that expectation was when somebody needed that monies that would be, be equivalent to that dollar value, we would at least pull them out for those purposes. And never could it be said that well, that there's not money in it, there's not money to spend because we haven't, we don't have that money to be spent that they can, as Amy's saying, she's going to constantly be accounting for it and keeping us updated that they've earned certain revenue uh, for their purposes, right? For the use of their purpose. I thought it was just about where we, where we, which line item we parked it.
Yeah, if, if that was, if that was the case, I wouldn't even be talking right now, Chris, but the challenge is the Board of Finance has signaled that they intend in the future to use these funds for non-police matters. So in the hypothetical, this fund could be exhausted for non-police matters, and if there was an expenditure, there is no fund to tap if it's been used for other purposes. Not the case today, but if, example, there's 100,000, we moved it mid-year, that, that we have to buy new body armor or whatever it is, there's a crisis that arises or cruiser radios or, or whatever it is. Now, again, yes, we can go to the general fund. You're absolutely right, but um, let's say that that 100,000 was used to buy a new plow, not inappropriate expenditure and, and something that comes up, not, not picking on Tom Roy here. But the, the, the account would be zero, Chris.
So, so are you saying then the Board of Finance has, not revised, but they've just added a different perspective into this conversation post when we, when we kicked the decision around?
No, this has always been the intent. This is what we kicked the decision around before, that this was our hesitancy to even entertain it. That we always, we always wanted to fund it, but again, there's a walled off. Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, the fund is not truly walled off right now. We can move it over. We would have to authorize money to come out of it, and then the Board of Finance would authorize it to go wherever, right? Is essentially what they're asking here. So we refuse, right now, if we refuse to move this money, it can't be used for other purposes. Right, Amy?
No. So if you refuse to move the money, the money automatically reverts back to the general fund in accordance with how the fund was set up by previous boards of finance.
Amen.
Going somewhere. So it's going somewhere. And if it goes to the Capital Reserve Fund and we could technically kind of earmark it for police use, and you're saying that we need that money, we're not going to not need that money for the police use, then I don't really see an issue with the Board of Finance telling us we can't use it for that if we have a need for it. So I, I guess I don't have any issue right now with doing, um, what this, this motion states to, to move the money. Because it's, otherwise it's going to go to the general fund, which is an even bigger pool of, um, right, is not as, you can designate better out of the Capital Reserve Fund. I mean, is that true?
Sorry, you broke up. What did you say?
You can designate it more kind of earmark it in the CNR versus the general fund.
I'm good.
For police use. So why not just go with how it's set up?
Yeah, Eric, I'm, the, these are funds that are raised by the police for Private Duty Fund. Uh, the town has already paid them through our Police Department for their wages for that. So these are not net dollars, but these are the actual dollars that come in, correct? Believe. Is, is that a correct statement, Amy?
Sorry, say it again.
Um, the dollars that go into the Private Duty Fund come from charges that the town sends out for this private work that the Police Department does.
Yeah.
The wages for those policemen, for the hours they work, have already been built into the police budget.
Um, it's not, no, so it's not built into the budget in the general fund. So the, the, we essentially do the hours and then we bill for it. So the expenditure comes out of the Private Duty Fund and then the revenue to the Private Duty Fund. So then the, um, the difference is the fund balance, which is what gets moved.
Okay, so those dollars are net dollars after we bill. Okay. Um, my only concern with taking these dollars out is that they cannot be used for something for the Police Department uh, who fundamentally is raising them. Um, I, I see why we're doing it. It, it is a change in practice in the past where these dollars have been roughly earmarked for needs of the Police Department, whether it's, um, vests or something else. Um, that is my only concern with, with doing this. I think it becomes really cumbersome to take the money out, put it into the general fund and then go back and try to reallocate it for cameras or new cruisers or computers or something. That, that's my only reluctance to doing this.
Mike, Wendy's right, though, and the new dynamic here, which Wendy reminded me of, is that apparently there's language that we haven't been weaving for the last 20 years, moving the money to the general fund at the end of the year.
Okay.
Town's never done that, as far as I know. So to Wendy's point, it's moving no matter what, which invalidates my argument essentially. Because I was forgetting that.
Then we should have been.
Private Duty Fund should be reconstituted to say that it sits there, is really what should be happening, but we're not going to do that tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, this is stupid that we're moving it, in my opinion. It should stay there, is really what we're fighting about, but as Wendy. I mean, this, this is stupid that we're moving it. In my opinion, it should stay there is really what we're fighting about, but as Wendy reminded us. Um, it moves no matter what I want to do tonight, so.
To create it, to create a zero balance.
The fund should be shut down and recon- and, and reconstituted or whatever the term is to, to say that. It, it does not transfer back to the general fund at the end of the year, but again, we're not, we're not in a position to do that tonight.
Jump in quickly.
Maria, please.
Yeah, just to recap, because I know we've talked about this over a number, a number of meetings. And so you might recall that about two budget cycles ago now, we started budgeting, uh, the CNR plan for six year chunks of time, both revenues. Expenditures. And so what we had begun to do, uh, because we were carrying fund balances in the private duty fund was appropriately. About, uh, excuse me, budgeting for those CNR police needs, um, and then showing the transfer coming out of the private duty fund. Moving into the CNR fund to cover police needs. So for the last few years ago, we were showing that through the budgeting process. And we were limiting the use of those funds for police needs. You know, I know I've articulated to you for many years now that we're concerned, um, that we don't essentially have enough cash for capital for our smaller capital needs. And, you know, I don't envision we're ever going to, to reach a point in time. Where the police CNR needs are going to be less than the funds that are being generated, um, through private duty and. Um, you know, when you think about things like replacing car cameras, interview room cameras. Um, their bulletproof vests, et cetera. Those are large expenditures, the laptops that are their data terminals for the police cruisers. Those are large. Uh, CNR items that we have to purchase on a routine basis, many of which are, are purchased every few years. Um, so again, I think the way that we had developed the budgeting mechanism we're using now is transparent and it's appropriate. The Board of Finance, however, did not seem interested in, in that. Um, you know, they landed on this, this idea of perhaps doing an unassigned capital reserve. I think that this board from one of our previous discussions is more comfortable with an assigned capital reserve, um, specifically for future police needs. Um, that's something I also felt comfortable with. Um, I think ultimately where they landed again was this concept of an unassigned, you know, putting the money unassigned into a capital reserve. Um, as Amy and I indicated, it's something that it's just an extra step for us that we would track. Um, and I think I had shared it to you previously, you know, my professional opinion, we have these, you know, large amounts of capital needs for police. Um, I think that it's very unlikely that I would recommend, um, spending those dollars elsewhere. Most likely it just doesn't make sense because then you're just putting that burden onto the mill rate and our taxpayers pay for those police capital needs. Um, that we're just going to have to take care of anyway. So, um, again, if you all wanted to compromise with the Board of Finance and say, yes, you know, we'll just. Put it into an unassigned capital reserve. Again, just, just create an extra step for us to essentially track that. Um, but just, I would again, want to reiterate to you all, that my plan through the budgeting process would be to, uh, use the police private duty funds. For police needs and not for other town needs.
Okay. I'd be comfortable moving forward. We, I haven't introduced a motion yet, but I, I. This seems like a lot of extra process. And, and some extra work. Um, and I agree with the sentiment that it would be ideal to keep the money in the fund until we want to spend it. Um, but given that it's going to leave the fund, um, I think that the capital reserve fund is a, um, makes the most sense. So that's my. My thoughts. I'd be comfortable moving forward tonight with this. Okay, I'll, uh, see if we have a motion. Uh, effective November 23rd, 2020, to approve the police private duty fund transfer request as presented. Any further conversation? Any opposed? Uh, one opposed. So the motion passes, uh, five to one. Item F is a road acceptance for Hendrix Lane. Um, this is where nineteen single family homes off of Climax Road have been approved, uh, so far, uh, I believe a dozen of those homes have been built. And in order for the people who live there to receive town services, like plowing, we need to accept the roadway. Staff has reviewed, uh, planning commission gave a positive referral at their last meeting. I wanted to see Jeff, if there's anything, uh, you or, or Mike or other staff wanted to add at this point.
No, nothing. Pretty straightforward, uh, similar to Murphy's turn. We're ready to take it over. We think the developer's done a. Good job in completing the public improvements and it's time.
Is there a motion effective November 23rd, 2020 to accept the Hendrix Lane roadway? And related public improvements as a town accepted roadway.
So moved? Where is everybody?
All right, sorry, sorry.
Is that a second, Chris?
Sure, yes.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item G, uh, is, uh, a. A little bit different than one of our normal, uh, grant requests. Um, CROG, which Simsberry is a part of, has applied to FEMA for a brick grant to fund an update to the capital region. Natural hazard mitigation plan. It's part of this grant process, CROG is looking for commitment letters from member municipalities. And Maria, I thought it would be helpful if you provided a little more context because this is different than most of our grant applications, but hopefully I got it right so far.
Yeah, and I'll just ask, um, Mike to potentially jump in and help add anything he feels is helpful here. Um, this is really similar to a regional CROG grant. We've, um, authorized the last couple of years for, um, emergency management funds. Where CROG is actually the applicant on behalf of the region. And then by our municipalities signing on, we're able to participate in that, um, in that program, potentially any, um, projects that. Might come out of that grant award. And so this is very similar and that this would be a regional grant that CROG is submitting on behalf of the region to update. Um, the, the mitigation plan, um, and that by signing on, we essentially can participate in, in that update. Uh, Mike, is there anything you wanted to add?
I, I think the key is, is we need to maintain our hazard mitigation, uh, plan. In order to have eligibility, should we apply for FEMA hazard mitigation grants? So CROG, uh, updates the plan for the region, does the annex plan for the town. Um, so this is just the housekeeping of making sure the plan's current. So we're still eligible for federal funding. Should we pursue any hazard mitigation grants in the future?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. Is there a motion effective November 23rd, 2020? To approve the attached commitment letter to participate in the capital region building resilient infrastructure and communities. Natural hazard mitigation planning grant program and to authorize town manager Maria Capriola to execute said document.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Whoever came up with these names is getting paid by the word, I'm telling you. Item H, uh, bridge easements in McLean Game Refuge. Um, this is a legal counsel conflict waiver request. So this stems from work that the town is going to be doing to rehabilitate two bridges that are adjacent to property that's owned by the McLean Game Refuge. In order to perform this work, the town will need easements from the game refuge. And McLean has asked the law firm, Day Pitney, to work with the town attorney to establish these easements. And Day Pitney currently represents the town as bond counsel on totally unrelated matters. Our town attorney is advising this board, uh, to approve a conflict waiver request since we do hire attorneys. Um, anything that, uh, I need to be redirected on there or does that sum it up? Okay. Were there questions from the board on this item? Is there a motion effective November 23rd, 2020 to approve the attached conflict waiver request? L L P to represent the McLean Game Refuge, Inc. in connection with the town's request for easements. To perform rehabilitation of two bridges adation, adjacent to the game refuge property.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, Mike, you're on mute and, um, Mike, I believe that you're abstaining from this vote.
Sorry, I, that finger's, I'm abstaining from that.
Okay. Uh, so the motion passes, uh, five, nothing with one abstention. Uh, item J, uh, in your packets tonight is a proposed agreement. To sell a portion of open space that's adjacent to 133 Holcomb Street. And also to purchase an easement for a bike path along Route 315. The owner of 133 Holcomb Street owns a business property along 315 where the town is planning to build the bike path. As part of this agreement, the town would purchase this easement and also sell a small parcel of open space that's essentially. Behind the home or in the, attached to the backyard of 133 Holcomb Street. Uh, this parcel of open space is not publicly accessible and as part of the agreement, nothing can be built on this parcel. The Board of Selectmen up to this point has had two public hearings on the sale of this open space. More than thirty members of the public participated. Um, just, just in terms of the financial impact, the cost of the easement would be fifty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. And the town would receive, uh, six thousand dollars for the sale of the open space parcel. I wanted to see if there was anything any board members wanted to add. Um, or any questions at this point. I'll also see if I see, um, looks like town attorney Bob DiCrescenzo is on the line. Bob, is there anything that you wanted to add?
No, uh, the contract.
Uh-oh. Hey, Bob, you're breaking up. Bob, I'm sorry. We're having trouble hearing you.
Can't hear you.
No. Okay. Perhaps we could go to the next agenda item and come back to this.
Yeah, I think you said he was going to try to call in.
Okay, yeah, he'll come back. Let me just move on to the final agenda item. Oh, oh, you got there quickly, Bob. Okay.
You're not back, Bob.
How about now?
Oh, that's my battery.
That better?
Yes, don't move.
Hang up your phone and use your wife's phone, yes.
Let's see. Here I am. Okay. When the, uh. We've always worked off the plan that's attached to the, uh. Contract, I think it's Schedule A. And we originally thought that the parcel was about one point zero eight acres, but upon. Uh, a more refined way of measurement, it's really point eight acres. And so we've got to work that out. What you may wish to do is to take this matter up and, uh, prove the contract subject to final revisions on the size of the parcel. Or you could wait until we get a definitive size of the parcel. It's really up to the board how you want to handle that.
I, I just want to say, it says point seven six.
Point seven six, right.
Anyway, so that's what.
calculation that, that's the more, uh, definitive calculation of the plot. The parcel of land that's depicted as Schedule A to the contract. Um, originally was thought through a different calculation methodology that it was one point zero eight. But, um, and maybe Jeff can explain the difference.
Yeah, initially we took the GIS information, we did a quick area calculation off of the GIS, which is approximate. And, you know, very preliminary. And then subsequently, when we got more serious about closing on this. We did a, we mathematized the subdivision map to kind of close that line. And the original total acreage of the open space was like one point two acres. And the actual piece that was going to be given to or sold to, uh, Mr. Antonio was about point seven six acres.
When did this difference come to light? My understanding is that, uh, is that all parties were receptive to this agreement at the. Close of business on Friday when the packet went out.
It came to light probably Friday. Double check the size with Jeff and. Um, there, there used to be a blank, it's used to say blank acres, waiting for determination of what the size was. It's important to point out that the configuration of the parcels has not changed. It's always been the parcel that you see on Schedule A. Um, which is the area behind Mr. Antonio's house up to the, um, the town land that adjoins it.
So what's the, what is the, i- if the land is the land regardless of it, whether it's point seven six or one point zero one. The price was assessed and agreed upon in the documents. What's the? What, what, what's the conversation that we're having? What does it change in the, in the deal?
Twenty percent less land, right?
Right, but it's still the same land that we've been talking about. In the, in the overcut, the tri- triangle of land in the back of the yard, right?
I agree, yep.
So I don't know what, what does this add or detract from the deal?
Well, th- we have not yet reached agreement on whether or not that is sufficient to the purchaser. Who says, I thought I was buying an acre of land. Now you're telling me I'm buying something less than that.
Presumably he was familiar with the property given, given its location.
I also want to point out that that is the plan that went to public hearing, when you had a public hearing prior to making the decision to sell.
So I mean, Bob, in brass tacks, are we talking about haggling over the six thousand? Is that, I mean, is that what this is getting down to or? Is he pulling out of this because it's not an acre? I don't understand. He wants his land, right?
He wants us to, to adjust the line, that we have to create this new line to create the parcel. To adjust the line so that the adjusted line. Uh, the area as a result of the adjusted line equals one acre. Which can be done. I mean, there's what, one point two five acres out there, right?
Yeah, one point two one.
Go ahead, Chris.
My, 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 my mind is starting to melt here. My eye, uh, and it's going to start coming out of my ears. I don't, so are we? The idea was to, I think your proposed Bob is that. The language of the agreement, if we can agree to that, it's fair to just agree to that and then amend. For the accuracy of the correct measurements after, right? The measurements aren't going to change our decision of why we're doing this or not doing this.
Well, subject, you'd have to make it subject to final determination of the size of the parcel. And.
And we're not giving up any more than we initially.
You're saying though, aren't you? Potentially redraw the lines?
That's the purchaser's proposal is to redraw that line. So the amount of land equals an acre.
Doesn't that trigger, doesn't that trigger an entirety of the process to happen again though, Bob?
Yeah.
Well, it should go, i- if we're going to change that line, that's, that's a different parcel and that's not the parcel that went to public hearing.
Right.
All right, scrap it, revise it.
If we're moving, if we're talking about moving the line, we're talking about going all the way back to June, right?
Yep.
What my proposal would be tonight is that we, we pass this agreement. And if, uh, Mr. Antonio, um, wants to sign it, he can sign it.
As is, right? Triangle that we've been talking about.
Yes.
We're all talking about the same sheet of music.
Yeah.
All it is, is that the, the size of the sheet of music i- i- ended up being a little bit different, but. The sheep are still grazing on the same piece of land that we've been talking about the whole time.
It just, the, the, the map is drawn as it has been the entire time.
That's correct. It's the calculation of the area of land inside those lines. That changed because of a more, um, accurate calculation of the area. Is that right, Jeff?
That's correct, but it doesn't include actual survey on the ground. So it potentially could change even again.
And that's why word approximately blank acres plus or minus is in the document. You know, when you, when you're at the point of, of going to contract on the sale of land, unless you have your survey in hand. You don't know the exact size of the parcel land. You have to approximate it. Um, and, you know, until we get somebody out in the field that can place that pin where it needs to be placed and then calculate the area. Inside the pins, we don't know whether it's point seven six or one point O or something in between. We do know, however, that the plan that was. We do know, however, that the plan that was offered uh, to the purchaser is the same plan that is reflected in the contract.
Okay.
I love
I don't think we should expand the land and the contract should stand as it is. And and the buyer's been very interested in this land regardless of, no one's ever mentioned that it had to be over an acre to be interested in the land. It was the land in the picture and on all the, in all the surveying and assessment, so I don't, I don't think we should change anything to make it an acre. And I believe Chris said if they agreed, they agree, then they don't. I mean, I'm not even for the agreement in general, I'm just arguing this point because I find it sort of frustrating that it has to be an acre now.
Okay. Let me see if there is support for this motion and we can, this won't stop the conversation if there is more conversation. Is there a motion effective November twenty-third, twenty twenty to approve the purchase and the sale agreement regarding an easement at twenty Tariffill Road for the proposed multi-use trail from Route ten to Curtis Par and the sale of a portion of open space along the rear eastern property line of one thirty-three Holcomb Street? Further, um, move to, uh, execute a purchase and sale agreement with the property owners of one thirty-three Holcomb Street. I'm sorry, move to authorize Town Manager Maria Capiola to execute a purchase and sale agreement with the property owners of one thirty-three Holcomb Street and twenty Tariffill Road once the final mapping and surveying of the Holcomb property has been completed to the Town Attorney's satisfaction.
I'll move. Second.
I seconded. Um, further conversation?
I I don't know if this is where the conversation, I'm for the bike path, but I'm not for the deal as a whole, so I just wanna say that.
Yeah, understood Wendy, thank you. Anybody else?
I I have a question. Um, during our public hearing, um, what's at issue here is the size of the parcel on Holcomb Street, correct?
Correct.
Um, what did we represent during the public hearing, how big a parcel that was?
I believe it was one point O one acres. Uh, Mike?
Okay. Um, my my big concern is that if we represented during the public hearing it to be a certain sized parcel, we should be really close to that. I'm concerned that people may misconstrue what we're doing.
I agree with you, Mike, but I I'm looking at this from the other lens in that we presented the exact configuration that we're approving tonight.
Okay.
We're not changing the, we're not changing the lines. So my argument is, is that we've, we've been presenting the same piece of property.
Okay.
And we're now narrowing in on it and Jeff and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's always been approximation wording as we've talked about this project.
Yeah, correcting myself, it's one point O eight acres that we represented and we did say plus or minus on the map. Uh, we might have misrepresented the accuracy with the point O eight being attached to it, probably should have just been a one acre plus or minus.
Yeah. And I'd be comfortable moving forward because I doubt that the this small difference in size would likely have changed any of the public comments we received for or against this.
I guess, I I and I agree there, my argument is that if we change the lines, that to me like feels like a a a bigger change than the plus or minus approximation of acreage that we've been talking about. And while we may not have said that specifically as the public officials, the folks that have been negotiating the contract have always been working with the words approximation, correct?
That's correct. Or the only line you can change would be the line that isn't there yet. And to increase the size of the parcel to meet one acre, you would necessarily have to move it farther towards the neighbor's backyard.
Yeah. And and i- if you recall, some of the justification for the disposition was based upon the the lines, the design of the lines and the essentially the usability of them or not, so I I that then would be changing that, I mean, it would work, be working against that that position, so I'm not I'm not in favor of doing that at all. And essentially, I think what the motion on the table allows us to do, Mike, is is the 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 purchaser has the option to purchase through the continued good faith effort that we've presented, I there's, I don't think there's been any intent here to deceive or anything else, we've all been operating honest, I mean, we we got videotapes and public hearings and everything else to prove it, right? And if that's not satisfactory to him, then then he can say no. And we could potentially restart this process over again or or go in a different direction is essentially what I I think we're at tonight. We're we're trying to finalize the deal that in in concept, we've all been talking about from day one. I don't, I don't feel like we've changed anything on it near. Um, if he feels that way, that's that's up to him. And again, I'm I'm not gonna tell him how to feel. So going back to the, your request for comments, and I'm just following on with Wendy. Putting the number aside, yeah, about the concept of what we're talking about, speaking to this whole event, just wanna reiterate my position from before, which is, I didn't, I I don't like how this all sort of came about. I don't like some of the information that was delayed and being shared and came out as part of the process. Um, I don't agree with some of the justification of of, um, why we should do something on behalf of the landowner. I wish the process would have been, I I wish the piece could have been conveyed to us. Um, all that being said, I'm not gonna stand in the way or ask the town, towns, our residents to pay for something, um, right now, considering all of the other challenges that we are gonna be facing and have to make decisions on, even though this is a very small purchase. I just fear that talking to friends in the Board of Finance and talking to my friends on the board here and all, we have so, we have some monumental things to figure out in this town in the next five to ten years and adding this to the, to the bill of the taxpayers is not something I'm wa- I'm willing to do. But I did vote in favor of the swap, essentially. That's my sermon.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody wanted to add anything else? Okay, so the motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, me.
Okay, the motion passes five to one. Thanks for the conversation tonight. Lastly, the, we have an item on the Economic Development Commission's work plan for the coming year. So it's in your packets is the proposed work plan. It is essentially unchanged from what they've already been working on. And just, just so for the folks at home, um, it includes things such as the business incentive policy, doing a revision to that, completing a refresh of the town's marketing materials, um, outreach to businesses, uh, work supporting entrepreneurs, especially people who work from home. And my recommendation would be to keep their work plan as it is, let them complete the items that are on the work plan. And then, once that happens, we can at any time add additional items. Um, so that would be my recommendation going forward, but I wanted to open it up.
Uh, so I don't know if this falls, I apologize. You guys, you can just say inappropriate or doesn't belong there. Um, the, consider, i- in in light of where we are as a community, with what's going on, um, have they asked for some different directions as far as uh, the learnings that are occurring right now and the needs that are occurring right now to po- possibly pivot some of their their, the hierarchies of their, of this plan to something else, and just best perspective, has any, has that been brought forward by anybody?
And just for your context, Chris, at their last meeting, we asked them if they had items that they think should be prioritized to work on too.
And I'm saying, I guess you're gonna respond back, they said, no, we're good with where this we are.
Is that something, I actually didn't have the opportunity to connect with, um, your Bob Crowther. I didn't know if that's something staff could confirm tonight on what that conversation looked like.
I can elaborate, and then also, um, both Melissa and Jackie and Mike were at the meeting, so they may wanna to jump in as well. Um, you know, I think that the group felt generally good about, um, the draft work plan as presented. For the marketing scope, um, I am reviewing that now. Um, that team refined a scope and 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 brought forward a revised proposal, and I know that some of their work has pivoted a bit, um, to, um, less of a necessarily a hard copy sort of marketing presence and a bit more of a website, digital, um, type platform that we can use, um, given the current status of the pandemic. Our business outreach, um, visits, we are continuing to do those, but again, those have shifted and we've been doing those virtually. Um, and I think that those have been really, really productive. Um, so again, this is just a couple of examples where I think the work is continuing, it's just changed a little bit, um, to accommodate the pandemic. But I don't know, Jackie, Mike, or Melissa, if you all might like to add anything that the the commission spoke about.
Just to pull out one thing, Chris, um, you know, they're really working on co-working spaces. I think that that's something that has come and and everybody, it's come to the forefront as necessary. And I think that that's maybe where they pivoted, if that's a good example for you.
Sure, thanks, Jackie.
Sure.
Yeah. I think it's just fascinating what's gonna happen because of the pandemic and the shift to working at home and continuing to support people who work from home, which is, I think, gonna be a larger share of our town than ever before.
I was just gonna add in terms of business outreach, um, you know, those visits are still ongoing and we're doing them, of course, virtually in the meantime, um, but a lot of the questions that we're asking are geared towards, you know, how are, how are you doing, how are you responding, how are, how about, how that thing's changed for you, um, what can, is there anything we can do to help? So definitely, um, focusing on that and during the business outreach business we've been doing.
Eric, can I ask you, this, this is a stupid question, but I gotta ask it. So people are working from home, right? So help me again how we envisioned helping them?
I can take that.
I mean, they're working from home.
Yes.
Jackie.
Right, so.
No, so Sean, what's happening, it's it's very interesting, um, we know some landlords and business owners in town who had vacant spaces that are completely full now because they can't have both spouses maybe working from home, so one of them needs an office space. And then the other thing we found, um, is the co-working is their need a place to have, do a presentation for work, or they need a place to have a conference room. So that's where there's a big pivot right now. So they're working from home, but they don't have all the tools at home.
And that's where my stupid question comes in, we're not allowed to go to work because we're not allowed to go into conference rooms with each other. So why are we pivoting to putting people in conference rooms? But I think this is you're talking about evolution. I'm confused by it overall, because, you know, the reason we all can't go to Hartford is because we're not allowed to be in contact with each other.
Right, I see this as a longer term play than what what we're gonna have in the next nine months.
Yeah, this guy, this is okay. Okay, thank you. That's why it was a stupid question, it wasn't.
No, no.
I'm getting it.
God, we got there.
All this stuff sounds like the stuff that I'm not allowed to do. I'm supposed to stay at home and not talk to anybody. But you're not allowed to appropriate students. I'm literally not allowed to go to the office.
That's other reasons.
Well. Thank you. I support this agenda.
Other questions? Okay, I'll see if there's a motion effective today, November twenty-third, twenty twenty, to adopt the Economic Development Commission's twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one work plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Wendy and Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion carries, thank you. Great, appointments and resignations. Uh, we have a reappointment, uh, of Jennifer Caulfield, who is the, um, unaffiliated, uh, member of the, uh, Police Commission, where she currently serves. That term's expiring, so is there a motion effective November twenty-third, twenty twenty to reappoint Jennifer Caul- Jennifer Caulfield as a regular member of the Police Commission to a term beginning January one, twenty twenty-one, and then expiring on January one, twenty twenty-five?
I'll move that.
Second.
Any further conversation?
Jennifer's been doing a great job on that, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion effective November twenty-third, twenty twenty to appoint Jen Bachelor as a regular member representing the Board of Education to the sustainability team, replacing Jeff Tindall?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the sustainability team is neat, it brings people together from multiple boards and commissions, which they can always lead to cool things. Review of the minutes from November ninth, twenty twenty, uh, any feedback on those minutes?
I had, I had some feedback on, on discussion on item E. The, it's, it says after discussion, like adding deed restrictions and the small cities grant application. It was really the deed restrictions for tax sale properties. Um, that's what we were talking, we talked about, right? Maria said we we had kind of agreed in some small consensus that those were things we would pursue from the town. So.
Yeah, so for, so for the, for properties that were subject to a tax sale, did it not specify tax sale?
It just said deed restrictions. It didn't even say that they were things we kind of agreed to pursue, so I would also add those because I believe we asked Maria, those were things we could look into. It just says we just talked about them, but we did, I think as a board, agree to look into those.
Since we didn't actually take a formal vote, I'm wondering if it, I mean, I think there was general consensus, but I'm just a little concerned about saying that we agreed to something.
Okay.
Um, but I I agree, there was consensus among the group on those two items. Um, so would you, would you propose any clarification here?
I I would just say after discussion on where the board could help, um, I mean, talking around deed restrictions for tax sale properties and a small cities grant. And then it kind of just just, I just wanted reference that that we did talk about it as something to pursue.
Okay, I'm good with that. Do we need a mo- a formal motion to adopt the minutes with that change? Is there, um, a motion to amend, um, the minutes with Wendy's suggestion? And, um, and pass the minutes or approve the minutes?
Go ahead, Lindsay.
So moved, I mean, yes, please. I guess, sorry.
Uh, okay, Mike seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the minutes, uh, we have finalized minutes from November ninth. Any selectman liaison or subcommittee reports?
Can I ask about communications first?
Oh. That's out of order, but you can.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry, I thought that was next.
No, I wasn't going to, uh, maybe I messed up.
No.
No, my bad. Um, I do have a liaison report.
All right, any liaison reports? Sean?
Um, so just to consider, or can continue my soapbox from, uh, Thursday. Maria, thank you for pointing out, and both you and Eric, uh, very eloquent on on your warnings, um, on on COVID and getting together and Maria for advising folks to go back and watch the public safety meeting. Um, just to say it again, if if folks missed the top of this meeting, Jennifer Katennis and her team does a a fantastic job of, uh, contact tracing, keeping us healthy, keeping all the reporting done and doing it with very little staff. Gotten a a fair number of questions on, why don't we just hire more people at the Health Department, et cetera? We fund the Health Department, but that that agency is is not, does not fall under the town's umbrella, we do have representation on their board. Um, but it's not simply the six of us just go out and hire resources. Um, and in fact, it's it's really not being funded adequately or addressed from the state uh, standpoint, given what these folks are doing, um, for for large quantities today on contact tracing. And I would be remiss if I did not bring up again the incident that occurred in town roughly ten days ago, I believe, uh, with the the teenagers in town all getting together at a private residence, uh, um, which which ended up being a pretty substantial event with with, uh, individuals attending the party, at least one with COVID and then additional folks, I believe, testing positive as a result of that. Maria, keep me honest here, but I believe some businesses had to close. Our high school had to close for two days as a result of this. Um, and again, I know that that there are, um, there's been, uh, Um, and again, I know that, that there are, um, there's been, uh, uh, Facebook posts by some of the kids that attended this event mocking COVID procedures and not taking this seriously. I've led to believe that there are parents involved that are not taking this seriously and, and blowing this off as kids will be kids. I grew up in this town. I had a classmate that died as a result of one of these parties from underage drinking, et cetera. Um, because somebody's parents thought it was okay to just let kids be kids. Um, we've continued to have kids in this community die as a result of that. Now we have COVID on top of it and enough is enough. I've asked Maria unofficially, because I can't ask the town manager um, as an individual selectman to do anything. But I have asked that the town consider that the chief consider investigating this matter further from a criminal standpoint. We have laws in place, um, as a result of a tragedy that happened in Glastonbury, where there was a party such as this and teenagers died. Um, that there was liability for the homeowners. There's a reason those laws are on the books. I'm not suggesting anybody go to jail here, but I am suggesting that people take this seriously. And with COVID, we've now exposed potentially hundreds of community members and their families, their elderly, um, their immunocompromised to this horrible disease for no good damn reason. And people need to start taking this seriously. And I'm sorry, I want to get together with my family. I want to get together with my friends. And I know it must be terrible when you come back from college and you want to see all your buddies. I get that. But we need to take this seriously and we need as parents and as adults in this community to step in and do the right thing. Um, so I don't know what will come of this. It's not my purview to investigate, but from a public safety standpoint, I can speak very strongly that businesses are distressed, residents are distressed as a result of this. Um, because a business gets shut down like that for a perceived violation and 40 individuals or so are not taking this seriously. And there appears to be no repercussions. Um, and that's not acceptable in this community. That's not how we operate. We have more respect for each other and, and, and we should do better. Um, so I, I hope that at the very least, we've all learned a, a pretty, a pretty hard lesson here that this behavior um, really shouldn't continue. And, and Maria, I'll leave it in yours and the chief's capable hands to do whatever is appropriate. Again, we're not, I'm not, uh, demanding of anything here. Um, but I know that you and the chief are very ethical people and, and will do whatever is right for the situation. So I appreciate that.
Sean, thank you so much for that. You know, I think we've heard a lot about enforcement of sector rules on businesses. Um, when we've received complaints, things of that nature. Uh, but there's also the piece that as residents, we also have a responsibility to adhere to the gathering size restrictions. And currently, again, I, I mentioned this in the report, for a private residence, a gathering is 10 people. Um, and that is a requirement at the moment. And so, you know, to have had a social gathering far in excess of that, that then resulted in several businesses, you were correct, um, having to close their doors for a few days. Um, the high school having to close their doors for a few days to allow contact tracing to, to take place. And our contact tracing resources are very stretched right now at the health district. Their resources in general are very scarce. They are going in a million directions. They're supporting our superintendents to keep our schools open. They're supporting us municipalities to make sure that we can make sure that things like getting our roads plowed this winter are going to keep happening. Um, they are supporting, again, the enforcement of sector rules for restaurants and, and things of that nature. Um, so to have this completely unavoidable, large gathering, um, drain their very scarce resources. Um, it's just very disappointing. And so, um, again, we're trying to better understand what happened. Uh, for contact tracing to be successful, it is very important, um, that people are honest, um, with those trying to contact trace and that they feel safe doing so. So, um, sort of separate of that process, we are trying to better understand and learn um, about the gathering and what happened and, and we'll be looking into it further.
Thanks, Maria. Any other subcommittee reports? This is an important conversation.
Yeah, I know. I can't follow that.
No, go ahead, Wendy.
That was very heavy. So, um, I just wanted to give a couple of notes from the Board of Ed, um, that Erin Murray, who has been the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning is leaving. Um, she's been in her role for 14 years and she was the principal for Henry James. Um, I think she's retiring, but I also think she's doing something at UConn, which I'm not sure what she's doing. They talked a little bit about the capital review plan, um, you know, and the Tecton plan. And I'm not sure, I, it's going to come up at our tri board meeting, but right now they pointed out that there's immediate needs of at, at least 2.7 million just to, for maintenance purposes on the schools, which are going to have to get factored into the capital plan. Um, so I think it should be interesting to see where the facilities plan ends up, if it gets, you know, pushed out or what happens as we look at everything as a whole. And then I did want to just comment on the affordable housing, um, conversations. Mike does, Lynn does double duty for planning and zoning. Um, but I did go to the planning meeting after our last, the November 9th meeting, and there was at least 10 people there from the public in our town, ranging from, um, Bob Petricelli, who owns Folly Farm and is an ex-SIGNA executive. And I think the ex, um, CEO or something of the Hartford, along with, you know, young people, some of color, some of not color, who are, live in our town or want to live in our town, all who spoke on affordable housing and how they want to live in a town that is inclusive, um, with, with diversity and includes age, people aging in place. Um, and allowing young people to come into town. Um, so it, it seems like a really hot topic. And the, the points that I heard tonight, uh, which came up on that meeting was that people are interested in some form of task force or advisory committee because there's so much. The plan that the planning committee put together i- is a, is a nice plan, but there's so much detail, um, and other factors that need to go in to make decisions on where the town moves forward. And that a lot of people were not happy with it, with the 1% over five years. So, um, just wanted to point out that it did seem like a common theme that Simsbury residents want to pursue this. And if it requires a task force or some sort of committee, then, um, you know, that's something, if we're, if we're involved to make that decision, then we should consider, um, the needs for that. That's it.
Wendy, yeah, that was, that was an interesting meeting. I think that, I think one of my takeaways from that was Alan Cresco was the general counsel, former general counsel. Um, the, but I think what was, what is there, my comments from that, watching that meeting, um, lot of interest, lot of subjectivity from residents. And I think what's going to be really important, I hope we bake into it is there is we get more objective and more data to help us. Because that's what's lacking, I think, from the conversation right now is data.
Yeah, like I, we don't even know what the demand is. And so, whatever. And you, um, how Jackie and, and Sean mentioned last time, the housing, you know, we have housing stock that meet those price levels. Um, and the frustration with also the state legislature being so limited for that 10%. Um, so to look into potential changes there too. So anyway, just, it really drew a lot of people, so.
Yeah, thanks, Wendy. Yeah, this is a fascinating topic and what, no doubt, one we're going to be talking more about. But I, I think it's important to define the problem that we're solving. And really understanding is, are we, is the goal to increase diversity? Or is the goal to increase affordability or both or neither? Um, but I want, I want to, I think we, I think there's work to do around that. Cause those could lead us down different paths. Other questions, thoughts, comments from the board? Okay. Uh, John, communications?
Somebody explain what exactly this is, this Board of Finance list?
Sure, I could, I could jump in, Sean. So, um.
I'm looking at it and I'm kind of mesmerized by the.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you. I, I wanted to make sure you all had a copy of this draft, um, budget guidelines document that the Board of Finance has discussed. Um, this was um, sort of a new document that they've discussed within that context of the upcoming budget process. Um, I know that they do plan to discuss it with you at tri board. Um, so again, just wanted to make sure that you are aware of, of this. Um, you know, some initial thoughts that I have on it. Um, and again, I'm sure we'll, we'll talk about this more at tri board. Um, but I, I do feel that it's also important, um, as part of the budget development process to recognize the goals and priorities of this board as well as the goals and priorities of the Board of Education. Um, I think that while, um, that particular budget, you know, document, um, that the Board of Finance is putting together reflects their goals. Um, it doesn't necessarily include sort of a more comprehensive, um, look at what the other policy boards are valuing and, and where you're directing your energy and your work, because I think that's right. The tough job that both Matt Curtis and I have is that, you know, we have a responsibility to develop responsible budgets that also reflect, um, your very important policy goals as, as well as our important financial goals and sort of blending the two together. So that's just sort of some initial thoughts and observations I had. Um, another piece I do have a bit of a concern is some of the, um, information requests, just in terms of staff capacity. Um, I know you've heard me mention this in the past, but you know, early in my career, I was a budget analyst for a standalone budget department in a very large city. And typically, you know, um, when you have, um, that type of a department in a large city, you have the staff resources and budget analysts do that kind of work on an ongoing basis all, all year long. Um, I would love to have a full-time budget analyst. We don't really have the resources um, to, you know, have a full-time budget analyst and to put together the volume of information that's being requested, just being quite candid. Um, and particularly given our current pandemic situation, if we had the luxury of having additional resources, you know, I would be recommending we put that into direct service, whether that's a, so, you know, social work or, um, you know, something of that nature. So again, I, I have a, you know, a few concerns I haven't had an opportunity yet articulate, um, to the Board of Finance. Um, but again, since I know that they plan to discuss this with you at tri board, I didn't want you all to be surprised. And I wanted to be able to see the document in advance of the meeting.
Yeah. And, and just so Mike, I'm clear, is this a, I mean, is this a demand before they'll look at the budget? Is this, I, I, and is this in addition to the budget book? Is this, you know, are they going to explain to us they want this all spiked out? I mean, there's, you know, I, I look at things like performance metrics by department. Like, uh, again, what you're getting at, I mean, this, this is substantial data request here, right? That we either may not have or B have, as you said, the staff to put together. So, um, I would love to know if the Board of Finance is thinking of funding additional position or positions in the finance department for this as well. So it's just, it, again, this, this seems pretty substantial. And then again, the benchmarking alone is a full-time job, right?
Right. Again, you know, just again, speaking back to my experience as a budget analyst, so it was, you know, at least six months of, you know, budget development work in terms of, right, performance measurements for my department.
Six months of work, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I was assigned, um, about at the time, and this is going back 15 years, just under $20 million, um, in, in terms of the departments I was responsible for. So kind of take that and then keep, you know, expanding on our overall budget, you know, town and board combined, that's, you know, $100 million budget, that's five analysts. I mean, it's as requested, I think it would be very difficult. And again, particularly given that we have pandemic efforts that we need to respond to. Um, and again, when we're looking at our resources and trying to provide direct services right now, um, while some of that information we are already providing, and as you know, we've refined, you know, the last couple of years, like we are doing some financial benchmarking and we have been including that in the budget book, um, the last two years, just not to that extent. So I think we can still, um, produce some of the information that's being asked because we have begun to do that over the last few years. But to be able to do all of that in this climate without a full-time budget analyst, it's just, it's just not feasible.
Yeah.
Very candid.
Okay. All right. So we'll talk more about that. I just, I, yeah, again, I, I was looking through it. I know you and I had talked conceptually that it was out there, but to your point, make sure we all know it, that, that it, this exists. So we'll have to work with our friends down the hall to figure out, you know, which parts of these we can do, how do we do it? I think a lot, you know, I, I think this board and with town staff does an excellent job of budget preparation. And I think we vet things pretty substantially. So look forward to this discussion. And that meeting is on the 30th, right, Maria?
Monday.
That's correct. Yep. It's, uh, 5:30 PM, uh, and that is, yes, Monday.
I guess if you want to talk about a fast year, just picturing us in the, um, tariff, tariff room last year, right?
Yep.
Jackie and my first meeting ever.
It was a fun one, wasn't it?
I don't even know what was going on, but.
Don't worry, they don't change. This one will be the same.
You know, a little more this year, I hope.
Very much like going to the principal's office.
All right. Looking forward to it. Anything else for communication?
I just wish you guys happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris.